Good evening, I'm Michael Popa, Executive Director of Mainstream Coalition. And thank you for joining this candidate forum co-presented by the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, Mainstream Coalition, Advocacy and Awareness Group of Johnson County, Climate Action KC, Mid-America LGBT Chamber, and the Northeast Johnson County Chamber. Tonight, we'll hear from four out of the six candidates running for ALATHA Board of Education. Please note that all candidates on the November 2 ballot running for this office were invited to attend. We're offering closed captions tonight through a third-party service. If you don't see the captions, please click the CC button at the bottom of the Zoom window and choose show subtitles. A link to the full-form guidelines will be placed in chat, but I'd like to go over a few items before we begin. It's important to note that this is an educational, nonpartisan event for the general public. It is not a debate. Candidates will have two minutes to answer each question. We will then provide a countdown of time remaining for each candidate in the chat box, and we'll give notice at 1 minute, 30 seconds, 10 seconds in that time. If a candidate continues to speak after time, our moderator will politely interject and move on. If time allows, at the end, we will be taking your questions, so please submit those using the Q&amp;A feature at the bottom of the Zoom window. Odd-year elections often go unnoticed, and voter turnout can be as low as 10%. And this is a critical election year, especially for our local school boards. Outside money has been pouring into Kansas from extremist special interest groups and federal PACs targeting our local school board races. And if that isn't enough, disinformation and harmful rhetoric seems to be the bedrock on which some candidates are campaigning. It's not only important to know where candidates stand on the issues, it's critical that voters understand what the real issues are. The partner organizations cosponsoring this event believe that democracy works best when people are informed and active. And we hope this forum provides you the opportunity to learn more about your candidates and make an informed decision when filling out your ballot. And now, I would like to welcome our moderator, the incomparable Janet Milkovich, Vice President of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County.
Thank you, Michael. I appreciate that. And welcome, everybody. It's so good to be here. I would like to introduce our candidates in alphabetical order, and then we'll get acquainted with a warm-up question. So I'd like to introduce first Brian Connell. Good evening, Brian. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for inviting us.
Now, I'm going to introduce Brian Geary. Hello again, Brian. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening. Thanks for having me.
Sure. After that, I'd like to say hello to Kristin Schultz. Hello, Kristin. Thank you for being part of our panel this evening.
Hello. Thank you for welcoming me.
Sure. And last, but certainly not least, is Julie Steele. Welcome, Julie. Glad you're here.
Good evening. Thank you to the hosts.
Absolutely. So let's start by getting acquainted with one another and acquainting our participants with you. So our first question is two parts, and we'll go in alphabetical order for this one. And the first part is, what are the most important leadership qualities you bring to the school board? And then, what will be the first thing you do in January if elected? So Brian Connell, you're up first for this. Do I need to repeat the question?
Well, let me read it back, make sure I got it right. So the first thing was, what are the most important leadership qualities?
That you bring, right?
And the second would be, in January, would be the first thing that we'd focus on.
Correct. Thank you.
So, you know, leadership is one of those interesting things that isn't necessarily everything that you've done, but what you can do and what you bring. So I think the most important leadership issues, thoughts that I bring is involvement, engagement, passion, interest. Passion for the kids, passion for the teachers, passion for the schools. From a leadership perspective, you know, I've run a business, I run a consulting business. And frankly, I ask a lot of questions. Ask Dr. Allison, Dr. Jaeger, I ask a lot of questions because I want to know a lot of information because it's the gaps that really formulate why we ask. And so I have a lot more to know, a lot more to learn. And that's why I've been to every board meeting and every board in this region is because they're all different. And I think that's the one thing I do know is that my involvement, my engagement, and my focus on the kids. In January, the number one thing that I would focus on is that we just have to just say, look, as a board, as a group, as a community, we've made mistakes. It's just own mistakes. And sometimes those mistakes are rectifiable, sometimes they aren't. And I think some honesty and some transparent really helps. We have to admit that we've made mistakes and say, but we need to be better together. I would tell you that whoever's on the board, we need to kind of find a respectful level of stability that we can get along and do things because the community is going to matter, and they're going to need us to do so. So the first thing is, one, we all get to meet each other, we need to know each other. Kristin and Julie and Brian, none of us have really been in a room together. The first thing is, we've got to know each other as individuals so that we can figure out our strengths and weaknesses together as a team, whoever's on the board. So that's my primary focus.
Well said. Thank you so much, Brian. And now, Brian Geary, would you like me to repeat the question?
I think I've got it here. I think from the importance on the leadership side is confidence factor in what we're doing. And when you're making decisions, you're always out in front of the game. So hindsight's always 20/20 on a lot of things, and you just need to learn from those things and move forward. I think that being, that being said, that's one of the biggest leadership qualities that I can bring. And I understand that a lot, especially in my entire life, there's mistakes I make, but you learn from those, you move forward, you share your experiences with others, that hopefully they won't make some of the same mistakes that you did. But at the same time, it's also, you know, Brian mentioned a good point about, as far as asking questions and getting to know things because our school district is incredibly large, second largest in the state, and it's important for us to understand all the working parts, but we also have to rely on the people that we put in those roles to manage those parts of our district. So I would say the things I bring are the confidence factor to know that, hey, I'm going to make mistakes, but at the same time, I'm also going to learn from those and move forward. And secondly, it's a little bit the history that I have in the last four years of getting through things of all kinds of leadership perspectives within the district. The second part, first thing I do in January, it's going to be getting on with things we've been doing the last four years. We've kind of had a blip the last 18 months or two years of really spending a lot of time on pandemic-related items. And quite frankly, we need to get going on a lot of things that we had in our strategic plan and going from there. So moving forward, full steam ahead will be that time.
Thank you, Brian. And Kristin, I'm going to move to you, please, for the same question.
So what I bring from a leadership perspective, I think, is, in my studies of leadership, I'm a big believer in the relational leadership model, and that really alludes to what both Bryants have already spoken about, the importance of developing relationships on the board and understanding what each person brings and respecting the different perspectives that each person has. We all have different lenses through which we view the business that's brought before the board. And I think having the perspective that each person is there for a reason and has something to contribute is a part of the practice of leadership. No individual is dominating. No individual is going to bully others into his or her way. And I think that having that perspective is a part of being a good leader. So jumping to January, I think we'll be in a position to take stock of where we are with the better part of, you know, the first semester being out of the way and really understanding where are we mid-year with not having anything other than masks as mitigating factors? And how are our students doing? And how is our staff doing at this point? And I think that's going to be one of the most important things for us to take stock of in January.
Thank you. That was a complete answer. Appreciate that. And Julie, you're up. Do you want me to repeat the question?
No, thank you, Janet. I think I have it. You know, I would say, yes, all of the above. And maybe in addition to, the two leadership qualities I think are so important, especially right now in this time period that we're in. The first thing that comes to mind is just empathy. I think when we lead with empathy, it forges relationships. I think we gain emotional connection with other people. We're creating safe spaces for everyone to communicate their needs. I think also, when you lead with empathy, there's a creative process that happens and leads to solutions that otherwise maybe we wouldn't land on. And I think identifying needs, when you're empathic with others, you are truly learning about their perspective and what it is they see in a situation, and that's crucial as a leader. The second thing I would add is communication. And I think everyone has been discussing that in some way, shape, or form, but I think we need to communicate relentlessly. We owe that to parents, community stakeholders, and we owe that to our students, and quite honestly, our educators. We really could do, always be looking for ways to improve our communication. I think when you listen for understanding, rather than listen to plan your rebuttal, it's a completely different conversation. So I think communication is important. And, you know, everyone wants to be heard, right? And especially being a leader in a decision-making position, that's your role, is to listen to everyone. Briefly, jumping to January, I've been drinking from a fire hose, and I don't think that'll turn off if I get a seat at the table. So I'll get my bearings. The legislature will be in full swing, and I need to understand the financial aspects of running a school district. So John Hutchison, I'm coming for you.
Thank you. I feel like I got to know a little bit more about each of you, and I know that the people listening from home did too. So I appreciate that. Julie, I hate to do this to you, but you're going to be up first for the second question. And it's, as a board member, how would you support diversity, equity, and inclusion? And part two is, how do we make our students of color feel that they have a voice and feel safe? And Julie, would you take that one first, please?
You bet. Thank you. This is a subject matter dear to my heart, and it's something that I truly believe is a valuable focus for our school district. We have the lovely gift of having a diverse community here in ALATHA. And not all surrounding districts get to embrace that, and that's exactly what we should do with it because we have this golden opportunity to prepare students for this world that we're going to be exiting them into. And so I think just embracing our diversity and making sure that we are ever focused on our students always having a sense of belonging. You know, everyone deserves to have meaningful opportunities, and those may need more attention from a planning perspective if they're not happening organically. And I'm proud that we don't just have a committee, we have a department, a diversity, equity, and engagement and inclusion department. And I'm proud that we have dedicated resources to that, and I think that it's meeting needs of our students as well as our educators. I know sometimes we get stuck in a place because we want to microanalyze one single word, and that's equity. And I would like to express that I think when we embrace that not everybody enters the public education system needing the same things, then we're able to provide for them. We're not talking about lowering the bar, and we're not talking about changing expectations, but we are talking about what are we providing them. I came across a quote that was in my campaign materials today when I was prepping for the forum, and it really hit me. I want to always remember as a leader that when we're discussing with a person something that affects them more than it affects you, we need to remember that to us, it might be an academic exercise, but to that person, it's unveiling their story and possibly their pain. And that's what we need to remember as decision-makers.
Thank you. I appreciate that answer. Kristin, may I swing back around to you?
Yes, but Janet, would you restate the first part of the question, please?
Of course. As a board member, how would you guide and support diversity, equity, and inclusion in your district? And how do we make students of color feel like they have a voice and that they feel safe?
Well, I think the first and most important thing is to ensure that the people in our district who have been tasked with mapping this out for us know that they have board support. That is the single most important thing that I can do as a board member, to emphasize that, but also to personalize it and to keep driving it home. Ask questions about where we're going, what does our timeline look like? What does our equity audit look like? What are we learning about ourselves? What are we learning about our blind spots in our staff? What are we learning about our blind spots in our family? Who's feeling overlooked? What are the resources that haven't even occurred to us that we need to implement in order for people to feel like they belong in our district? In past practices that I've had with DEI, we also include B. And I heard Marquis Harris, who is one of the staff members who's spearheading our diversity and engagement department, describe belonging without actually adding B to our approach. And I think it's incredibly important because it's a key aspect of making all of our students, regardless of their cultural background, whatever diversity represents for them. And diversity isn't one thing, it's many different things. But to ensure that our students feel, and our staff feel, like when they come into our buildings, they are in a place that they belong. So a voice and safety for students, is that the other question? We've got to create that environment in which they feel like they can speak up. We had a situation not all that long ago where I think there's a big question that was raised for me. Why would a student of color have felt like going along with something that clearly wasn't in his best interest? And I want to know answers to those questions. I want to know, do our students of color feel like they can speak up? And ensure that we're creating environments where they can and they do and they will.
Thank you. Nice answer. Brian Geary, we're coming back to you, ready or not. Would you like me to repeat the question?
I think I got it.
You all are good listeners, I gotta say.
I got a good pen. Now, I think probably the biggest thing with guiding and supporting are, I think, the biggest word in that is the inclusion. And so whatever that inclusion looks like for people, it might be race, color, whatever, religion, any of those types of things. So I think we need to make sure our students are feeling included. So if that's improving our diversity, which I think is important, equity, so that everybody is at the same table, I think that's important for us to continue to do. I think we've made some good strides by, we have a department that is growing and has done a nice job of getting the word out that they're there for support in different ways. We have the SPOT that's out there and a great partnership in the community, which really leads me to my main answer, and that's just the community. How do we continue to, our community is so supportive of our school district in ways that, you know, how do we make everybody feel comfortable while they're in school, but also then while they're perhaps in our community and taking part in events afterwards? And so I think those two things are things that are important. Continuing to have, you know, Dr. Jaeger had a forum and a roundtable for students to talk about this and just know that they're being heard. I think that's important. So having different avenues where people feel comfortable coming and talking about these tough issues is important. And our kids in our schools are going to lead the way in this. I do think with students of color having a voice and to feel safe, being a parent of African-American kids, I think it's, I listen to them all the time. I don't know how they feel. I never will. And so being able to have that understanding of how they feel, a daughter that has already graduated with K-12 through the system, and then a son who's currently in the school district, I want to hear what they're hearing and feeling. I think that's important, so.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you so much. And Brian Connell, your turn.
Thanks for asking the question. So I'm going to start a little differently. I'm going to remind us all that we are all unique. We are all absolutely different from the person next to us. As one of five kids, we're absolutely different. But God created each of us in His image and as a reflection of Him. And that's important that we teach. Racism, separation, alienation, that's a taught thing. If you look at the youngest in our communities, they don't see those differences. They look for kindness. They look for someone who's smiling back at them. They look for someone who'll play with them. And that's one of the things that I want us to really focus back on is that you can call it diversity, equity, inclusion. At its core, it comes down to respect and showing dignity. If we, as adults, will step away from our biases and our experiences and our lenses, to use Kristin's word, our lenses, and look at it through the simplest of lenses, are we being respectful? Are we showing them dignity? It doesn't matter whether they're a person of color, LGBT, old, different shapes, young. We all need to exhibit that as leaders, and we need to get in the schools and keep it simple. There are 100 things you can do with DEI, but if we don't, every single time we talk about it, talk about, I love you, and I'm kind to you, and I respect you, and I'm going to show you dignity. My daughter goes to ALATHA North, she was at that event that Brian Geary talked about. That's the one thing she found, and she heard those kids saying is, "We all seem to get along," they said. But it's the adults who don't seem to want to get along, you know? And it's a taught thing, and we really have to start at the youngest ages and do so. For the persons of color, I'm going to tell you the same thing I'm going to tell my kids. I don't care who you are, but if you treat my kids and my family and your friends and your family with dignity and respect, you'll have my kindness and my love. There were kids last year that I visited them, my daughter went to prom.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Brian. Running over. Thank you for an impassioned answer. That's really nice. And Kristin, I'm going to come back to you, around to you for this next question. In your opinion, is enough being done by the district to protect students, teachers, and staff from the spread of COVID? And what additional protections, if any, are needed?
Wow.
I know.
And, no, because we don't operate like a hospital. And so, I mean, if what we were going to try to do is have the very highest level of mitigation of any kind of illness, then no. But that's not reasonable either, and I think reasonable is what we're striving for. I think that, without question, illness and COVID has caused us to really evaluate practices, even things that had been taught before but not reinforced, like great hand washing and making sure that kids are sneezing into their elbows instead of into their hands, or any number of different practices that have improved the health standards in our buildings. Space limitations have really caused some challenges for us about how we manage the mitigations that are recommended to us for COVID. And I know that there's been a lot of pushback about masking. And I was the guilty party who said we need to extend it to high school. And, you know, looking at the data that we did with our peers in other districts, it appears to have been the right decision, buying us more time to get greater vaccinations in both our staff and in our students, among those who have chosen to do so. I think also the spread of COVID throughout the student and community population, there is post-COVID immunity that then helps to mitigate the spread. So have we done what we can? I think that we have. Yes.
Good. Thank you. That was a big question to try to peel back the layers for the answer, but you did that well. Thank you.
Well, and you all got to buy a little time figuring out how you're going to answer it now.
And now, the microphone comes to Brian Geary. Brian, how do you answer that question?
Yeah, I think certainly, we go back to that word empathy a little bit and understanding where everybody's perspective is. So I think for a lot of people, we have protected them adequately. I think, again, this is a community-wide thing, so we have to understand people's perspectives. If people choose not to be vaccinated, for whatever reason, we need to respect that as board members, and we need to find ways within our schools to the best we can. Likewise, if there are people that have highly, you know, very impassioned reasons that they, you know, think everybody should be following the exact same thing that they are, that's hard, right? And we have to understand that we're not all going to be on the same page on anything, much less this. So I think it's important that we continue to take everybody's perspective into account here and make sure that we're protecting, and that's just, you know, that's teachers, staff, students, and our community. But again, it goes back to being a community-wide effort for us to get there. And as a school district, we are magnified because we have kids and teachers both, and adults in close proximities all the time, and that's hard. So I think the best thing we've been able to do is get enough time to help the professionals understand the disease a little bit better. It's not going to go away, so we need to figure out how we best mitigate it and live with it, both in our community and being a school in the community, that includes us. So I think we have tried to do that over the last 18 months and protect people as best we can within our schools.
Thank you, Brian. Brian Connell, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
In your opinion, is enough being done by the district to protect students, teachers, and staff from the spread of COVID? And what additional protections, if any, are needed?
So I think I'm going to agree with Kristin and Brian, is that, is everything perfect? No, you're never going to get perfect. This isn't a hospital setting. It's a school setting where people come in and out and go through it. But has the district done an incredibly good job? Absolutely. They have, but they did years ahead. I mean, I think there's some really things that we have to say the district has done well, that they planned ahead for the HVAC changeout some of the schools. They planned on a lot of the structures. They built new schools with more space, and they've added space. There are things the district has done extremely well to prepare us to do better than a lot of school districts have. So we have to own the successes they had. They put money in all the right places. I agree with what Kristin is reminding people that, yes, where are you supposed to sneeze? Not your hand in your elbow. The washing your hands, those are normal, everyday, common courtesy things that we should be doing all the time, COVID or not. But Brian said he's right. We're in an endemic stage, not a pandemic stage. This is something we're going to have to live with, just like the cold, just like the flu. So I think it really has to do with us always reminding people, respecting where they are. Are there differences? You betcha. Not everyone's going to get vaccinated. Not everyone wants to wear masks, but we have to give a balance between the board and the school district and the community and say, how do we work together that we're all thinking about each other, but also taking care of our own kids at the same time? So that's my shorter answer. So Julie.
Thank you. Julie, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I'm okay, Janet. You know, I think expressly, the Board of Education is in charge of prioritizing education and keeping students safe, period. So I believe that doing whatever it takes to keep kids in school full-time, uninterrupted, and doing their sports and their arts and their clubs, those are the things that keep some kids excited about school. Last year was tough, and when we knew more and had more data, we did better in getting our students more of what they needed. So I will always land on the side of full-time, in-person learning and doing whatever it takes to make sure that's going to happen. I am grateful to Elizabeth Holschuh, speaking at the August Board Meeting. I found her very complicated world of epidemiology brought down to a level that I could understand. Nobody wants to be in masks continually, and I'll dovetail on what Brian Connell said. I think it's important for us to start thinking about what is our off-ramp? Hopefully, for those who choose, and not by mandates, when our five- to 12-year-olds can be vaccinated, is that the time that we start talking about masks? And how long do we need to be in them? I'm very interested in that conversation. I've had some great conversations with people who are fearful of being out of masks. I will share with you, my 12-year-old is one of them. She has gotten so comfortable wearing her mask that we are working outside of school to get her not to wear it. So I personally am looking forward to a time period when she will go to school without it, and we're no longer working on that. We wear it when we're inside, but even when she's outside, she wants to wear it. So I think it's time to start talking about what will our off-ramp be? We're not there yet, but when will we be? So I think it's time to start talking about what will our off-ramp be? We're not there yet, but, but when will we be?
Thank you all for such comprehensive answers. And Brian G., you get to be first on this one. Recently, Olathe has been in the news about a controversial book. That word was controversial, sorry, book that was requested. On a seventh grade classroom wish list by a teacher to preview for her classroom. When the situation came to light, how did you respond? So that's Brian G. first.
Okay, um, well, how did I respond? Well, I. I learned about it through, uh, social media, honestly. I saw it come up on a, a feed and immediately reached out to do, to get more details on. As an existing board member, like what's the background here? Because there was a lot flying around. And have confidence in our leadership within our district that. It was under control and, uh, there was a lot going on behind the scenes that. Were already in place. And so I have to trust that as a board member, not to get too involved in that. Process and trust that, that, uh, Dr. Jaeger and other members of leadership in the district. Um, are taking care of that and that we would get an update when, uh, the entire process was done. So that's. Was, was kind of my, uh, response to it at the time. Um, I got several emails from, from people following up that, uh, I tried to respond to. That things were in the works of trying to understand better the situation and what was going on with it. And that, uh, it seemed to be under control at that time. So that, I mean, again, that's. Kind of how I handled it as a, as a sitting board member at the time.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. I think this is the last time I have the two Bryans back to back. So Brian Connell, would you answer that question, please?
Sure. So. I would say that. The situation was unfortunate. It blew up, unfortunately. Uh, I think everybody was reactionary. And I think my guidance. Guidance even at the time, if you would look, I didn't really do a lot of commentary on social media because I needed to find out the information as well. I did know that the book was actually first out a week and a half before that in Shawnee Mission Schools and an elementary school. So I was familiar with the book before it ever came to light in Olathe. I think the most important thing we need to learn from a leadership perspective. Is that we need to be proactive. I will give Dr. Jaeger credit, almost every, almost every major or minor, um, hubbub that's come up, no matter what it was. He's reacted very quickly. Challenges as an organization, we need to set a leadership model that says, hey. Be aware of these books, be aware of the con, the controversy. Let's, let's put age-appropriate things in the classrooms. We need as a direction of the board or in leadership of the superintendent to say. Be aware of it, engage parents, know what books are going in your classroom. Don't bring the books in if you're aware of it. Don't order the books if you're aware of it, if it's not age-appropriate. Seventh grade was not the age appropriateness for that type of book. The content in it had some really NC-17 things and not one of us would ever take a child of seventh grade to an NC-17 movie. And it is a movie. So that would be my guidance. We need parent, parents involved in a parental advisory group. And the board and the superintendent to set standards ahead of time. I don't like banning books. I don't think the book should be totally removed from our schools. I think it has a place. At the high school level where it can be analyzed and understood by those who are capable. Of understanding the content and discussing it, but middle school is not the right place. So. My reaction was, it was good to pull it. And, uh, I'm sorry, it seemed to agitate a lot of people, but it reminded people that we all as parents have to get involved.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. And Julie, would you please answer this question for us?
You bet. Um. You know, when issues arise and they will, they have, they will continue to. I don't think it benefits anyone and it especially doesn't benefit the district. To have a knee-jerk response that's accusatory on social media. That's not leadership. Um, what I chose to do was gather information. I, I'm not in the know or have a seat at the table yet. So I did go to people that knew more than I did and had direct contact with the situation. I learned, I listened from parents who were very upset about, um. About the situation and wanted more information. Um, and then I posed a solution, you know. Banning books is not the answer. But parents are such an integral, important part of the educational team and the success of their child. And we've got to include them and, and what they want for their kids. So the solution that I posed. Um, was that parents have a cha, an opportunity to weigh in on what their kids can access. Um, that may not be on an official list. And they should have an opportunity to opt out if, if that's right for that family. You know, the district will never be able to openly comment on particular situations involving students or staff. And we need to trust that we have amazing leaders. That are doing the best they can to lead our district and that they're dealing with it. And we can't expect that we, the public, are always going to know what's happening from the inside. The last thing I want to say is. I will never, um, out a teacher by name. And I think that is inappropriate and not solution-based. That is something that will divide our community and not bring us together in the name of a solution that works for all.
Thank you. Appreciate that answer. And Kristen, you want to wrap up? Another easy question?
Right. Janet, will you restate the question for me?
I sure will.
Just to make sure that I haven't gone far afield of it, my answer.
Of course. Recently, Olathe has been in the news about a controversial book that was requested. On a, a seventh grade classroom wishlist, wish list by a teacher to preview. For her classroom, when the situation came to light, how did you respond?
I can tell you what I didn't do. I did not blast it or amplify it on social media and it would be incredibly inappropriate to do so. What I did do, and I would have done the same if I had been a parent who had discovered that the book was in the classroom, was. To ask internally questions about how this happened, what happened? Was a child able to access the material? If a child was able to ask, access the material, which they were not. Um, would it have been with parental permission? Did the teacher know that the content was in the book? Any number of questions that I think are very appropriate to pose are what I would have done. Um, it was very easy to get some answers to those questions and discover. That everything that was really frightening about the potential for an extremely explicit, let's not. Let's not shy away from an, an extremely explicit passage in a book. To know whether or not that had been in the hands of a student for whom it would have been inappropriate. And it certainly would have been inappropriate for one of my students. Uh, one of my kids when they were students. Uh, but I also know that, uh, different families have different ideas about what is appropriate for their, their student. Um, we've got some kids who are accelerated learners and we're going to have to be aware. That what they're capable of reading, what they ought to be reading might be different things. So do we have? Processes and procedures in place to make sure that parents have a say in whether or not they're accessing materials that are appropriate for them? Um, in this case, my understanding is that it was not. A classroom library, but rather a library that was intended for an after-school, um, club. That, that parents did opt their students in. Asking questions leads to answers, but going to social media to blow it up and point at a problem and scream about it is not something that I would ever employ.
That's our quote for this question, asking question leads to answers. And I really appreciate how each of you gave very sensitive and thoughtful responses rather than condemnation. So thank you for. Reminding us how important communication is. Jill, uh, Brian C., you're going to be up on the next one first. And the question is about, um, sustainability. Oops, I think I'm wrong. Julie is the next one up first. Sorry, Julie. Sorry, Brian. So it's on sustainability. And many school districts encourage nature-based sustainability solutions. Ranging from composting in the cafeteria to school gardens, green infrastructure and even fruit orchards. What sustainability initiatives do you support for your district? And try saying sustainability initiatives once or twice, would you?
I'm going to avoid that, Janet. But you did a beautiful job. You know, Olathe Schools has been proactive when it comes to addressing the very real, um. Issue that we need to be concerned about. We have. What I, I'm going to get the number wrong, 70-plus buildings in our district. And, um, not only have we worked to design energy-efficient buildings, but we've also retrofitted existing buildings with. More efficient HVAC with, uh, windows that are designed to be energy-efficient. Um, auto shut-off light, lighting. I have a story about that in a minute if I have time. Um, you know, our innovative 21st century programs, um. That prepares high schools to enter the field over at Olathe West. We've got a whole green technology program dedicated to it. How cool is that? Um, very future-thinking. So, you know. Climate change is a, is a worldwide problem that we all need to lean into and understand our personal responsibility with that. And our district's doing a great job. Um, we can make a difference at home, but it's really great when we see our district with all the res, all of the. Uh, responsibility, the number of buildings and the resources they have, making sure that we're aware of that. Um, and matters from the standpoint of looking to the future and it's just good economic sense. Um, briefly, I was friends with, um, someone in middle school when I was, well, it was called junior high then at Santa Fe Trail and. Um, her father, Bob Courtney, was one of the first people working for the district that really. Um, started this whole turn off the lights campaign and. And I remember Cameron saying, you know, she's kind of embarrassed, like my dad's the light guy. But we were starting that way back in 1985, 86 and how cool that we've continued to grow and do better, which is what this district does all the time. We lean in to ways we can improve and we do it.
Thank you. I thought my father was the one that came up with that idea to turn the lights off. Brian C., Brian Connell, would you please answer that question? And would you like me to repeat it?
No, I, I have a pretty good feel. So I would tell you that I think Olathe has done a really pretty good job over the years and, uh. So what Julie's saying, so I'm older than her, but my dad was doing that in the seventies. Who left the lights on? So, yes, so Janet, I'm with you. You're dead and my dad were probably related. What, you know what I really like to see is a couple of things. Uh, you mentioned fruit orchards. I think we've just really done some really nice things of moving what they call the outdoor classrooms. Um, at Canyon Creek and, and Middle Lane. Um, they've done that. I remember last year, my son was a senior at Olathe West and I would see him on the locator on his phone. Walking across the campus, not in the building. I was like, where are you? He said, we're having a walking seminar. Walking lectures to get out to get some fresh air, right? So I, I'm a big, and of course, there were some facilities there. So a couple of things, I would love the elementary schools to really start building some shade. And maybe put in some fruit trees. That's a really good thing because then the kids can cut those open, look at seeds. They can use those seeds for their seed. Their plant seed building that they do in elementary school every year anyway, rather than beans. The other thing is I would like to see the green tech program grow to such a level that it. Is disseminated through every other high school. You know, right now, everybody's got their own e-comm-like thing where they're all videotaping and recording and doing their own. Weekly sessions in their schools. They've gotten the materials. We need to do the same thing. And take pieces of the green tech and move it. Into each of the schools. So there's like a micro pod in every school. And then bring that to the middle schools and then bring that to elementary schools. So that would be where I'd like to see. If we were really successful in the green tech, we would know it because it's trickled down to every group in our school programs. And I think they're on the way. I think that's a phenomenal program, uh, that they've got over at Olathe West. So that's my two cents on that.
Thank you. That was a valuable two cents. Kristen, would you please answer that question? Would you like to repeat it?
I would, Janet. Thank you.
Sure. Um, many school districts encourage na, nature-based, here we go again, sustainability solutions. Uh, ranging from composting in the cafeteria to gardens, to green infrastructure and even fruit orchard. What sustainability initiatives do you support for the district?
Well, one of the first things I'd really like us to look at and, and audit ourselves and how we're doing is. Um, what are we doing about the, the amount of food waste? Because we're a very large food producer and, and, uh, essentially the largest restaurant. Operating on any given day in, uh, in the city of Olathe. Uh, what are we doing with waste? What are we doing with paper recycling? What are we doing with composting? And is there more that we can do? How would it be implemented? And, uh, and then create a plan for that. I think there's a room to, room for us to grow in that area. Um, and I think we could easily weave our students into those discussions, especially as we look at things like the green tech. Green industry and, and those students. Science is a very important piece of what we're doing. And so weaving students into. How we solve some of these problems in our institution just brings them into the conversation and they have great ideas about. How, how they see the world being developed for them and what we might do. You know, that's a professional question internally. Um, externally, go, you, the outdoor classrooms have been, have been popping up since my kids were in elementary school and. We designed and had one implemented in three phases at Pleasant Ridge Elementary. And it's great to see that those things have been spreading across the, um, across the district. I have to shout out to the Olathe Public Schools Foundation. Often, um, they are the source of granting funds so that at a building level. Things like tower gardens or outdoor gardens or, um. Composting programs can be implemented at a building level. Uh, that's great, but it would be even better if we could take a district-wide approach to some of these problems and, uh, start working on them.
Thank you. And Brian, you get to have the last word. Brian Geary, you get to have the last word on this question.
Well, I will say, being in the schools a lot after hours, I get, uh, I get the blame for how hot it is usually. Because the air, uh, temperatures have been set to not run the air conditioners in the evenings or those types of things. So. I know there's, uh, there's people that are always trying to, uh, look at do new ways to save energy and some of that is. By setting our temperature gauges within our buildings at certain levels and lights going on and off. So. Um, that's always a challenging piece as we have community using our facilities, but it's an important piece. So any, any savings that we can do from an energy-saving standpoint, we have to get, continue to look at, at doing. Those are some of the obvious things. But I want to go back to some of the discussions that we have, we talked about with DEI with our students and. Getting them engaged in ideas. I mean, we have such amazing students and staff, but. That can give us ideas around how we can, can, can make. Out, outside time more, uh, more user-friendly. Like, how can we get things on? Mr. Connell's talked about. The, the walks of, uh, within classrooms that they do. We talked, we've talked about outdoor classrooms in general. And if anything during this pandemic, we've learned. It's, man, fresh air is great, right? So being able to get out there and do those types of things is important. I mean, obviously there's the obvious things of, of, of lights and, and, um, and AC that I mentioned, uh, before, but. Just listening to our kids on, on certain ideas. I, I kind of piggyback a little bit off of a couple of those people's comments and that is getting our food services. Uh, division, uh, involved in the process in ways that things we can really use. That we can be planting and gardens and, and we've, we've talked about that a little bit, but I just want to. Think there's so much that we can utilize with what we have in place. And, and gathering the minds of everybody together would be great or, uh, including green tech.
Thank you, Brian. So this is, uh. Because our time is going so fast, this will be our last question and then, uh, we will have a one-minute closing statement from each of you. So the question, and Brian C. will be first up on this one. Right now, our staff demographics do not match our student population. How do we recruit outside the usual ways? For recommendations for principals and other teachers. Mostly from Emporio State editorial note, so that we can increase diversity. In our educators and administrative leaders. So that's a really long question. Do I need to repeat it?
Nope.
All right, Brian. Brian C., take it.
So. There's four parts of that and I'm going to start with the, with the one at the end, but it actually starts at the beginning. If we truly as a community, respect and honor and show dignity to those who teach and educate. It need to be better compensated. It just do. The most important people in our community and those most important that affect our kids other than us parents. Need to be better compensated. Now, when we actually put. Now, when we actually put a plan in place, it compensates them for greatness and creativity and their passion. The kids they're teaching will see that. And then we needed to start recruiting from those kids who are helpers in their classrooms and say, you would be a great teacher. We need to kind of say that to them and say, I think you would be great as a teacher. Have you ever thought about that? We need to grow our own. And there's a really nice program we're starting, but it really should have been in place 15 years ago. But I know from talking to Dr. Allison, Dr. Yager, one of the challenges we have is recruiting those who reflect our community is, in the whole state of Kansas last May, only 47 persons of color graduated in all of the teaching programs. That's unsatisfactory. And whether we have to go to the colleges and universities and say, you need to do better on your scholarships, and we've got people you need to support, then we need to do that. We have to own that at the district level and go to them and say, make the money available to help these people become teachers. Secondarily, we got to get outside. Dad and I presented to Dr. Allison, Dr. Yager earlier this May about recruiting at traditionally historically-backed colleges and getting them here. Whether that's where the foundation comes in for moving costs and things like that, it's expensive to move to this area. But we can do it. But we've got businesses we can partner with that'll bring them in, that bring the spouses in as well. We've got to be more creative and more impactful.
Thank you, Brian. Julie, would you like to answer this question, please?
Thank you. Yes. You know, this topic has my attention fully. I have a goal for all students, but I really hope that my daughter, who's in seventh grade, will see herself in a leadership position, whether that's in the classroom, at the building level, at the district level, and have a personal relationship with someone that looks like her, that's a decision-maker. She hasn't had that yet. She's had amazing educators. We are so grateful. But what would it do for her to see someone who looks like her in a position of leadership and a part of her life? I have that goal for her and for all students. And we don't typically talk about how our students who are not of color would benefit from that as well. We are exiting them into the world that's diverse. They will have people of color who are their boss or who are their coworker. And we need to start building that expectation that this is just life. I would also add that, as far as being creative, totally agree with that. I think, too, we need to talk to our other city leaders. What are they doing? They're also trying to recruit police, fire, they're trying to recruit. What can we do better? And then we all know that people aren't clamoring to move to Aletha for the sandy beaches or the mountain air. So I'm looking forward to talking with Jim Bradford, Tim McKee at the Chamber to say, do we have a commercial that talks about Aletha and the metro area and how cool it is to live here? We have some, it is a great place to live, but do people know that? And when we're out recruiting, say, Mr. Connell, great, great idea about the historically-backed colleges, but are they thinking, why would I move there? We need to do, it's on us to sell us.
Thank you. And Kristin, you get to wrap up this question. Thank you. And would you like me to repeat it?
I think Mr. Geary is expecting to have an opportunity to weigh in at some point.
Oh, no, yeah, sorry.
Yes, yes, but I'll go next. Unless you want to go now, Brian.
All right, Kristin, you go. I won't forget Brian twice.
Okay, we can't make excuses for the fact that we don't have, that we don't have the kind of, the level of staffing that reflects our community. We can't make excuses for the fact that we don't have that staffing. We have to be ambitious and creative about how we go about resolving it. And there are a few things that we need to do. I do think that Mr. Connell hit on something important. Go where students who are graduating are and show them what an amazing community the Kansas City area is. It's very exciting for a young person, a young graduate. We know that there are young people who would want to move here, but we need to do outreach to them, find them, and tell them why our district is a comfortable place that is committed to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, and that we can ensure that when they come and they are part of, starting where we have a small percentage of our staff that reflects people of color, but we have ambitions to grow it significantly, and they're going to be in the early stages. And so bear with us as they are a part of helping us understand how to create a culture in which they don't have to code-switch in order to be comfortable and be themselves and participate and bring all that they have to offer, because all students will benefit if that's the way that they are permitted to teach and to operate and to engage when they are in our district. And I think providing those assurances to graduating students, wherever they are in the country, can make the difference between our continuing to try to climb up that hill slowly and with a big boulder on our backs, or being really innovative and attracting people who want to be part of something next level.
Thank you. And Brian, Brian G., as I'm calling on you, please note how your fellow candidate Kristin was looking out for your best interest there. So Brian, please answer the question.
Well, she sits next to me on the board die, so she's used to giving me a bump here or there, so.
Back to that relational leadership thing. We practice.
That's right. You know, there's a couple of things here, and a lot of people said some great ideas. I've brought this up many times, and I mentioned it before. I have kids that, as Julie mentioned, that have gone through the district without seeing people in leadership positions, not just teachers, but, you know, they've had coaches who have looked like them. But getting people in our senior leadership is important. So when someone comes out of a historically-black college or from an area where they're coming out of, they've got an offer. We know how great our schools are in Johnson County, specifically in Aletha. But when they look up Aletha schools, and the first thing that pops up is something about either a baseball coach or a homecoming sign or something like that. It takes a community to get better. I mean, we've got to get better at how we portray ourselves as welcoming or not. And again, those are just two recent examples. This has happened for a long time. And I think that we've got to get better at that. So I go back to the community piece and how we portray ourselves. How do we make ourselves stand out as welcoming? I love it in Aletha. I really do. And I think that we have great people here and great things, but we need to find how we portray that better and better each year. I do think a couple of ideas that I think could work. Again, I think the Hispanic community is another big piece that we have a very high level of Hispanic students in our school district, and so continuing to look for that demographic as well is important. And perhaps things like, we have some great paras, some great people who are in our schools that might not be certified teachers at this point. Perhaps we help with some tuition reimbursement. Perhaps there's people that we can recognize that, hey, these people, if you go back, we'll cover your school costs, but as long as you come back and work for us. Maybe there's people like that that we can help improve this. But we've got to get better at it as a community, so.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. So now we'll give each of you one minute to make closing statements. And Julie, I'm going to start with you, please.
Thank you. Well, first, thanks again to our hosts. I really appreciate this opportunity and think it's such an important voter outreach that they can see us unscripted and live and answering questions from the community. I'd like to leave you with this. You know, it's one thing to sit at the table for an IEP as a teacher, but I've also done that as a parent, and that's an entirely different perspective. It's one thing to support DEI in our district and believe in it, but I'm also the parent of a daughter of color, and that's an entirely different perspective. It's one thing to budget for my family and their needs, but I'm also a business owner, and it's not lost on me and my husband that the decisions we make affect the families of all of our employees. So the cross-section of my life experiences, as well as being an advocate of public education and loving this Aletha School District, that's my why. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Well said. Brian Geary, would you please make a closing statement?
Absolutely. Thank you. Again, I echo Julie's comments of thanking you all for doing this. We have a lot to do, and when I ran four years ago, there was a lot we had, we got going on. And in the middle of that, we spent the better part of two years finding a pandemic and just navigating this district through that. And so we have a lot to do, and I feel like we have a great set of people in place at our leadership level in our buildings and in our community that will help us get there. I think continuing to look at ways that we improve things that were brought up as a result of the pandemic, whether it be communication, whether it be different ways to do things, I think it's important that we continue to do those. We have to understand that we have, there are many perspectives that are brought into this community, and that has never been more evident right now. And community involvement and help will be something that gets us all there. And students, and we're always looking to prepare our students for their future, and that's where we'll keep going.
Thank you, Brian. Kristin, would you please make your closing statement?
Sure. I don't have anything prepared, which is kind of how I ended up in this position, because I didn't run, and I think a lot of people know that. But I did get tapped on the shoulder a few times when a vacancy happened, and I wasn't expecting that either. And I'm so grateful that I had the opportunity to join this board. I have been blown away by the collegiality and respect and ethic behind working with each of my fellow board members. I hope I have the opportunity to continue working with them, especially now that we've transitioned to the leadership of Dr. Yager, who I think is going to provide continuous phenomenal, phenomenal leadership for the district and really with the implementation of the Portrait of a Graduate and our strategic plan. I see great things happening for the next five years, and I look forward to being a part of them.
Thank you. Thank you, Kristin. Brian Connell, you get to make the last closing statement.
Sure. Well, thank you first, Janet and the team, all of you all for being here tonight. And I learn something new every time I hear you all speak. So my campaign isn't about me, and I'm going to be very straightforward. If I win or if I lose, I'm still going to be the same guy on November 3rd. My advocacy this entire time has been about the kids. And somewhere along the line, we've built buildings and boards and superintendents and teachers, and we forgot to put the kids back in the front of every decision, every economic decision, every schooling decision, every book decision. Really needs to be back, put the kids back in the front of it. And that's why I've been, if you look at my signs, it's not about me, it's about the kids first. With that, that means we need to be transparent. We need to own our mistakes. We need to say, hey, we need parent engagement. We need parents as a co-pillar with all of us, teachers, schools, administrators, board. The parents need to be part of that, and that's been what I've been advocating. And if I don't get elected and that happens, I will be happy. Because at the end of the day, the kids matter most, and all the rest of us have jobs or positions because of where they are and what we need to be taking care of them. So am I going to ask for your vote? I'm going to ask for you to think about the kids, and let's make changes, regardless of what the board looks like, that are really moving.
I have to stop you here. Thank you, Brian. I want to thank each of you for spending the evening with us, answering the questions so collegially. Public civil discourse is a wonderful thing, isn't it? So I will turn this back over to Michael Popa, and I thank you all again. Good night.
Thank you, Janet, for your thoughtful moderation this evening. And candidates, thank you very much for making time to share your perspective with us. I'd also like to take another moment to recognize the partner organizations who made this forum possible. League of Women Voters of Johnson County, Mainstream Coalition, Advocacy and Awareness Group of Johnson County, Climate Action KC, Mid-America LGBT Chamber, and the Northeast Johnson County Chamber. The League and Mainstream will be posting a recording of this forum on Facebook and YouTube, so please check them out and share them with your network of voters. And this is the last of our 16 forums for this election season, and I would be remiss if I did not recognize the team that has been working so hard behind the scenes to make these forums possible. Marie Hernandez and Debbie Kitchen with the Voter Information Team of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, and Mainstream's Associate Director Laurel Birchfield, and our comms manager Julie Passit. Thank you all so much for your passion and your hard work. These forums would not have been the same without you. And remember, early in-person voting will be available at eight Johnson County locations beginning on this Saturday, October 23rd. And if you're planning to vote from your couch, but you still haven't requested that mail ballot, do it. The deadline to request your ballot is on next Tuesday, October 26th. And Election Day is Tuesday, November 2nd. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Before you cast your vote, please visit vote411.org and ksballet.org to learn more about the candidates on your ballot, find your early or Election Day voting location, and make a plan to vote. KS Ballot is also available in Spanish at ksballet.org. Thank you again for joining us this evening, and remember to vote and get others to vote on or before November 2nd.